Allegiance?
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning. It's November fourteenth on a Tuesday. First, we need a motion to approve the agenda, but before that, there's an item that our auditor would like to add.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Just a second.
So, under the consent agenda, I would like to add to set a public hearing for December twelfth and authorize me to do the advertising for it. It is for budget supplements that need to be done for the end of the year. I just missed the Thursday deadline for the agenda.
Reprogram yourself.
I will.
Madam Chair.
You're so reprimanded.
Every day.
With that change, or actually, I yield to Commissioner Gibbon.
All right, Commissioner Gibbon, is that your motion to approve with that change? Commissioner Gibbon?
Is that, is that your motion, Jim?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
I've got a motion and I have a second. And for as far as the overall motion to approve the agenda, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. We'll move on to consent agenda. First, ask if there's any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda by the commission. All right, any public comment on the consent agenda? All right, if not, we call the roll. Or can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Madam Chair.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. We call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. All right, we'll move on to regular business. We have our Justice Center cost review and board discussion. No action being taken today.
Well, good morning. I'm Julie Dotson Robb from Tegra Group. We are here today with Lynn Remmers from JLG, and we're just here to give you kind of an update on the Lincoln County Courthouse project. We have just finished design development with the drawings. So basically, that is finishing up the mechanical, electrical plumbing design, roofing materials, interior, exterior finishes, landscaping, those type of items. We had Henry Carlson do a cost model update on that as well, which we'll share with you today. And then Lynn will also be sharing the schedule and just some high-level interior and exterior finishes. We wanted also bring up that we're going to be back in about a month. And at that time, Henry Carlson is going to be doing their guaranteed, or guaranteed maximum price for the project. So basically, they're guaranteeing that they can build your building for your budget. So that'll be the bigger meeting that'll be coming up in mid-December. And at that time, obviously, with the guaranteed maximum price, we need an exact design. So JLG and DLR will be here to discuss the final design as well. So I don't know if you have any questions at this point. If not, I will have Lynn speak to the schedule.
All right, thank you.
Good morning. Lynn Remmers with JLG Architects. And I'm going to pop this drive back in because this was clear a minute ago. Okay, thank you. Good morning. As Julie said, I'll, I'll give a quick overview of what our agenda looks like today. We're going to talk a little bit about the schedule, some updates that we've been discussing the last couple of weeks. We're going to do, in a month, we're going to come back to this group again and do a little bit deeper dive into the design. And so what I'm going to share today will be kind of a precursor to that discussion. I'll give you a little bit more background information, kind of where we've been, and kind of show you what we have developed in terms of some materiality and design. We're going to talk a little bit on the current budget and then talk next steps. Okay. So as I mentioned, there have been a few updates to this schedule. Some of the things I wanted to talk about today were kind of where we've been. Last time we met with you, we were at the end of schematic design. At that meeting, we discussed a schematic design package and also a cost estimate that was done early in that phase. So with, since then, we've completed our design development package. So basically, taking those schematic drawings and narratives and continuing to have conversations with the ownership group and developing those designs into construction drawings. So that phase, that submittal, rather, was submitted on September 29th, the end of September. That submittal is then sent to Henry Carlson for pricing. And they've spent roughly the month of October putting together a cost model and updating their information from our SD estimate. Last week, we started doing some budget and scope alignment. So spending some time in discussion with the contractors and also continuing conversations this week with subcontractors. We have a process in place that Henry Carlson's looking to bring trade partners on early. This gives us a chance to meet with those contractors, talk through options, and also, excuse me, doing bidding allows us to do some early procurement. So a lot of advantages to doing that now. Okay, some key dates. Like we mentioned, we're going to come back to you in a month. So the next couple of weeks will be finalizing that, the GMT gross maximum price. That's a submission that Henry Carlson will provide. So that's going to be done here in the next couple of weeks. Continuing to kind of refine that cost model as it sits today. We're looking at the December 12th commission meeting for our next update. And then the other thing that we're going to look at doing is splitting the construction drawings up into packages. So the first package will probably be some earthwork and some structural, footings, foundation information. And that package is going to go out a little bit earlier, so that'll go out kind of that mid-February range. That package will be bid, and then we'll come back to the board to share what those bids are and get some approvals for moving into construction. The second bid package will follow behind that about a month. And then, once that bid package one is approved, we can move into construction. Any questions on the schedule as it sits today?
Does anybody have any questions?
Okay.
Moving on.
So even though the schedule has shifted around, I just do want to point out that our, our goal of still starting in the spring is, is still in place, so, which is positive. Okay, exterior materials. You guys have seen this rendering before. We are looking at updating the rendering currently, so we are working on that. But I wanted to share a little bit about how we've developed the exterior materials a little bit more and making those selections. So you can see most of the building here, the main part of the building is precast. We have two color options for that precast and then also a textured panel that we're looking at. We mentioned previously, we brought in some of that, that wood for some of that warmth, kind of going back to the natural materials of, of stone and wood and playing off of that. So we do have a metal panel wood finish for the underside of that, that canopy. And then another, you know, simple trim materials and that sort of thing in another metal color. So that's kind of where our material palette sits today. Just to give you an idea of kind of, this is the level of documentation we're, we're in. This is that south exterior elevation in that 2D view as, as looking at the building. So this kind of shows you just that, that next level of detail where we're getting into documents that the contractor is able to price and build from. Couple of building stats here, our building areas. Again, the plan is still in place. The floor plan itself has not changed drastically at all from what you guys have seen previously. So the total build-out area on the three floors is about 71,000 square feet. And we do have a third-floor shell space of about 11,165 square feet. So total square footage then gets up to that 82,120. And that does include the square footage of the penthouse upon the roof. So that is some mechanical space. Some interior materiality and design. We've been looking and developing this quite a bit throughout design development. These images are case studies that we have used to kind of portray a little bit of our design intent and design goals. So you can kind of see with these images, the, the use of some wood, the lightness of the coloring, very airy, but yet elegant and simple. These images are concept imagery, so kind of that design inspiration, pulling back to, again, that nature, natural elements, the stone, that natural layering of the rock as you would see it in nature, and also pulling in some of the textures with some linear patterns of the wood and the carpeting and tile and things. So very, I guess, simplistic color palette as well. And here's a look at that, the jury courtroom, kind of that judge's bench elevation. So this is looking straight on to that, that elevation where the judge would sit. You can see there's some metal panel there with some, or sorry, some wood paneling with that wood green texture as shown, and there's some different coursing of that. So bringing in that kind of layering effect into that wood paneling, providing some interest in detail, and then also some different tones of the, the wood itself. So you can see there's a couple of options here of the, the wood. So using that kind of two-toned approach. And then the rest of the material palette, which we will dive into deeper next week, just kind of shows the, the overall kind of feel and color and, and materiality that you're going to see within the courtroom. So pulling in some of the, the carpet and texture on the, the wood and the acoustical panels that are on the back wall. Okay, any questions in terms of design or materiality? All right, well, like I said, next time we come, we will dive into this a little bit deeper. So I wanted to give you a kind of a precursor of it today and kind of make those little introductions and reminders of where we were at, and then dive in deeper next week or next month. So I'll have Dave or Mike join me up here and talk through where we were at with the design development cost model and how they've developed their numbers.
Good morning.
Morning. Dave Derry, Henry Carlson Construction.
And I'm Mike Carlsen with Henry Carlson Construction as well.
Okay, and so Lynn touched base on this a little earlier. Our target budget is still and remains at 54.8 million. And we are still online for that budget. And what we're doing right now is we're still making some scope alignments to make sure that we stay within the definition of the budget. And so we're going to continue to do that for the next three, four weeks. And when we come back in December, we'll have the scope and the budget aligned. And so I guess really that's all I can say is we're just going to continue to make the sausage and put this building together and make sure everything is aligned.
Does anybody have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
The, to be determined, the grant funding, when, when will you find that information out?
So Julie, while she speaks to that here.
Oh, okay.
I'm not quite sure. I know.
It's, we're talking about the UJS security grant.
Yeah, do you, do you want to come up to the microphone, Paul? Thank you.
Yeah, we're talking.
Introduce yourself, please.
Sure. Carl Thomas, Court Administrator for the Second Judicial Circuit, Lincoln and Minnehaha Counties. I assume we're talking about the UJS security grants that are available to counties for security features of courthouses. And thankfully, that, that grant cycle is relatively short. In other words, there, there isn't an annual deadline. They do it on a rolling basis. And there's a substantial amount of funding available. So we're, we're hopeful that that'll help defray the security expenses for this new facility to some degree. Right now, we're at the point where, in order to entertain our application, we, that committee that disperses those funds will need some specifics on what the potential costs would be. You know, some flesh on the grant application, and so we're in that process right now. But it, it's not a long-term grant application process like federal grants, for example. Fortunately, it's much faster, so we'd hope to get that relatively soon.
Thank you.
Yes, perfect. Thank you.
I was just going to talk a little bit, kind of those items below the construction because it's a little bit confusing because those are kind of been fluctuating throughout the process. But for the furniture, we have Connie Shields in our office. So she's actually gone through the drawings, made a list of all the furniture, everything that we're going to need on the project. So that's the total cost of all the furniture in the whole project. UJS will pay for their portion of it. So you will see that kind of state-funded items that are, yeah, so that, they are kind of that deduct of the 385,000. That's what the furniture for this judge's portion is deducted out of that because they will pay for that portion.
Julie, can you, can you just kind of, just for, I mean, anybody that's listening or watching, there's the different models as far as what each column itself represents? Could you explain that?
Yep, definitely. So the first column there is kind of the architect fees, owner representation, and illegal fees is in that top item. And so that has gone down a little bit from our concept cost. But that's more just kind of like Dave was saying, as we further revise, define the project, we've gotten that number a little bit more defined and ended up going down a little bit. The furniture is obviously the actual furniture, desks, chairs, anything that we need to run the facility and that. So it's a little bit different, too. So in schematic, we had that 3.2 million. And that included, at that time, furniture, audiovisual, and signage, kind of those three line items. Now we've kind of broken it out, so now we only have the furniture portion, which is the 982,000. Audiovisual technology is actually in the construction estimate because we're going to have Henry Carlson procure and install that equipment. Signage is still in there, but broken out, and that would be exterior and interior signage. And then we stated the state-funded items will be the furniture that this courts will be paying for. And then a couple below that is some additional grant funding that Carl spoke to that we're hoping to offset some of these costs as well. And then during, for the security portion, though, Henry Carlson will price that as their, part of their bid packages. So that's when we'll determine what that total cost is. And then it'll get split between what the county has and what the courts. So it'll be split up. And so the grant funding at this point is just for the judge's portion of the security. And then testing is just material testing once we start construction, testing concrete, steel, through construction, the survey of the property, wetlands. We did have a little tiny wetland, kind of in the southwest portion, that needed to be delineated, so that cost is in there as well. And then the last one is just owner contingency. As things come up through the construction process, there may be items that haven't been determined yet that the owner may have to pay for. But if nothing comes up, that money is returned back to the county. And then, yeah, just so there's a total on that. So that's gone down overall a little bit, but it's more, so that's just kind of, that, some of that additional money has gone up to the construction budget and is no longer in those costs. And then the land cost is below there to get to our 54.8 million budget.
All right, anybody have questions? Okay.
So, and then I guess our last thing here, we just want to talk next steps. So Lynn and Dave kind of indicated this already. We're going to just keep further refining the scope. And then we're going to finalize the budget so we can come back with that guaranteed maximum price on that December 12th meeting. And once we get there, obviously, we're going to meet that construction or your budget. So then we'll ask to be able to get that approved and then move into construction documents. And as Lynn stated to them, getting those two bid packages so we can start construction in the spring.
All right, thank you. Questions, anybody?
No.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there any public comment on this agenda item?
Someone was tall.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Linda Montgomery from Fervent, South Dakota. I'm here as a citizen of Lincoln County whose church just happens to be in front of this, this building. And my question is, when we talked early on, the, the church and our school, the house in back of it, was going to be left untouched. And I, you know, I look at this beautiful building, and I do know that it blocks the view from one way and the other way. So that's my, my question, one of them, and we're just wondering, where does the church stand in the, the properties on that corner? My other question is, and maybe you addressed it in the west, in the wetland, that part of that land won't support the building, and I'm assuming that's the wetland. And then how much did, did that change this building position at all that you're talking about? You know, I'm, no, I'm just asking those questions and wanting to see if they could be addressed, if they can't. I guess I understand that. But I think those are two questions that, as a community, we've kind of talked about, you know, in the coffee shops and things, so.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up and give input? Good morning. Just state your name and address.
Good morning. Joe Grossky, 28279, 478th Avenue. The security expenses, what is that, is that really talking about, is that internal to the building? Or are we talking future expansion of a jail? Because I, I know that's in the plans down the road. But is that, is that really what that security expenses is talking about?
I can speak to that a little bit. This is for interior security within the building, such as heavy, heavier steel doors in certain areas, different finishes that provide more security, pass codes and things of that nature at the doors. It is not.
When does, when does more discussion happen about the bigger jail?
We are not having those discussions right now.
I know not right now, but.
Yeah, we, I don't have an answer for you.
But it's coming. Everybody knows it's coming. Because it was shot down in 2020, but it's coming. A bigger jail's coming.
Did you have any more public comments?
None on this, no.
All right.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to come up and speak on this agenda item? All right, if not, is there any comment that you want to make at this point to Ms. Montgomery's comments or questions about position of the building or anything? And I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just, if you want the opportunity, you can sure have it.
Lynn Remmers, JLG Architects. Yes, I can speak a little bit to your question. I, to make sure I'm understanding with, in regards to the, the church and the placement. So the church itself, we are not impacting this site. So we are, we are set back to the north a little ways and east of the, the church property. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, west, thank you. And then the wetlands, we are, the, the portion of the site that actually was part of the wetland delineation was the very southwest corner of the property. There was a small creek that runs through that area. And so I think it was .7 acres or something very, very small in terms of land area. And that portion of the building, or of the site, is not being affected at all. That was part of the delineation. We had to kind of prove that we weren't affecting that area. It's part of the natural drainage way, so. And we, the building then, placement is for, far enough away as not to impact that. So I don't know if I answered your first question quite enough.
My first question is, that church and the adjoining, that whole blocks the view of this beautiful building that you.
Sure, sure.
So it kind of loses its, I guess, my sense.
Sure, yeah, no problem. Yeah, that was one thing we, we looked at in the design. And just because of the way that the site grading is, there, there is a little bit of raising that had to happen with the site itself to get that building footprint to, to be elevated enough to, to get natural drainage away from the property, away from the building. So as you're approaching on 18th, it will be set back from 18th a little ways. But with raising the building a little bit and just the height and overall mass of the building will be visible, I would say.
Thank you. All right.
Thanks.
All right, next agenda item. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tracy Humphrey, HR Director. Bringing to you guys, there's a memo attached that is asking for board action to review and approve the memorandum that was attached that, for the adjustment of the 2024 wages for Lincoln County Sheriff's Office Command Staff. So last week, we signed, you all signed and approved the FOP contract in line of what we've done in the past. And to, in order to avoid wage compression, the sheriff brings the request for the command staff to receive the same annual COLA as the rest of the deputies and law enforcement there. And this is the request for you all for 2024. As laid out, it's a request for a 7% wage adjustment in paragraph one. It's naming for the deputies and sergeants. So we're asking in paragraph three that the command staff, which would be our chief deputy, our lieutenants, and our three lieutenants receive that same COLA. And I'm happy to answer the questions.
Anybody have any questions for Tracy? And this is for three positions or four?
It's for two, it's for four individuals and two positions, technically. Because it's the lieutenants and the chief deputy.
Okay, and did you run the numbers on what the overall cost change was?
I have not done that. This is just sort of what we've done every year whenever we have the FOP. I am happy to get those numbers if you would like.
Does anybody want to see the actual numbers? All right. Oh, you've heard the request. If there's no questions, is there a motion? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Motion carries. And then, Sherry, boundary changes? And then Sherry, boundary changes?
Good morning, Sherry Lynn, Lincoln County Auditor. With the legislative changes that were done for the boundaries in '21, we've come across some problems in precincts, and we need to do some adjustments. The precincts that are going to be changed would be Grant, Perry, La Valley, Worthington, Lynn, and Sioux Falls 112. The biggest change is going to be that the south half of Perry and La Valley are going to be combined with Grant and Worthing. And then the polling locations would be in, they haven't been set yet, they'll be set at the beginning of the year, but it'd be in Worthing and the church. Then we have, the resolution would also combine two smaller precincts together. The precincts would be the Norway Fairview and Fairview, Inc., combined with Hudson and Eden. We are still looking for a voting location in that precinct, but combining these two precincts will bring that total precinct to 711 voters in that whole area. They're all in the same legislative commission and everything else districts, so the only thing that would change would be their voting location. The city of T currently all votes together in one precinct. The suggestion is to have one precinct per city ward, which breaks one precinct into three. The change is necessary due to the growth in T to spread them out a little bit more so that there's not, so such long waiting lines. Overall, the combined changes will affect about 8,500 voters that will be, that will need to be notified, and that will cost about $4,335. There are 13,000 total voters that will undergo a precinct change, though. Once we get all of this set, if it's approved, a good resource for anybody to check their voter registration, their polling location, and their precinct would be the VIP portal. I did attach the link for that. And again, the polling locations are going to be finalized later in the year, before the beginning of the year. Then we'll do that with the first resolutions of the year. Any questions?
Why was the change necessary?
So in La Valley and Perry, when the legislation did their precinct boundary changes, they split those townships in half. So now when you go, if we were to leave it the way it is, when you go in, you'd have two different ballot styles. And to eliminate confusion or people getting the wrong ballots, this would change it so that everybody would, there would only be one ballot style at the precinct.
And the additional cost is minimal here, correct?
There's no additional cost.
Is what?
There's no additional cost.
Okay.
There is going to be one additional precinct added to Sioux Falls 112. We're going to split off the southern portion of that and make it precinct 120 for, in the same reason, the legislation. So we're going to add, in total, we're adding one precinct.
All right. Other questions? All right. If not, you've heard the request. Is there a motion?
Also moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item?
Linda Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. My only question is, if we truly only have two precincts, that this needs to be divided because of Sherry's explanation, which is perfect. I think that's great. We don't want two ballots at the same location. That's just common sense. I'm not sure of the reason for the others. I know my precinct, I'm precinct two, combining those two, I can't really say I have a problem with it, but I do think, I guess I would appreciate some time for us to really process this. If we're doing all this for the two, Perry and La Valley, and disrupting 8,500 voters, well, actually, the 13,000 total voters will undergo a precinct change. I just want to make sure that, that we don't make a change, and then we, we go back to what happened back when the whole district things and everything happened. I just want us to put some real good thought into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherry, any comment you want to make?
Well, we have put comment, or thought into it. We've done this process over a year since the legislative gave us the lines. With the combining of the precincts in the southern county, you know, if anywhere in Lincoln County we have a problem finding precinct workers, it's the southern part. So to combine them to one for the 711 voters that it would serve, just stands to reason.
Thank you. All right. Item four, we have a first reading. It's first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning lots one and two, Lake Alvin subdivision, southeast.
Vote on that.
Huh? Oh, we are voting. Whoa, slow down, Tiff. Okay. Can we vote on that, please? Can we call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes, thanks. All right. Now I'll move on to the first reading. It's for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning lots one and two, Lake Alvin subdivision, southeast quarter, the southeast quarter in section 33, township 100 North, range 49 West, from the RC Recreation Conservation District and the Rural Residential District to the PD Planned Development District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The planning commission recommendation for approval failed zero to six. All right. We'll move on to our opportunity for public comment. Anybody want to come up and speak to items that are not on the agenda today?
Thank you, Linda Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. And I want to, oh, she's gone. Our auditor, I meant no disrespect with, with the, the changing of, I know they put a lot of work into it. What I want to talk to you about today is codified law 12 dash 20 dash two, counting at the precinct level. This is in law, and I know that, I understand about not having enough precinct workers. The plan that we look at when we're talking about actually working on hand-counting ballots that we always have done, that's in codified law, and I want Lincoln County to be leaders in following codified law 12 dash 20 dash two and dash three. We've been working on work groups for actually doing hand-counting. We are following other states and counties that are successfully doing these hand counts. The reason, you may ask, why, Linda, are you wanting to do this, all this work, find precinct workers, watchers, and counters? Because there's too much in our elections, too many closed doors, too many secret meetings that public aren't allowed to, and we are not able to even have those things recorded. It doesn't make for confidence in our election to be free, fair, and transparent. I believe in transparency. I believe that our freedom to vote is one of our greatest rights that we have, is to make sure that I know and my precinct people know, and citizens of Lincoln County know that their vote was counted by their peers, and it was watched. And these, we have four people, and this is, you have to have Republicans, Democrats, and independents, that they can sign up. We have a precinct in Minnehaha that is almost full to capacity as far as having those three positions plus supervisors filled. People are going knocking on doors. Would you be willing to count? Would you be willing to be a poll worker, a poll watcher? I believe elections need to be done in public. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come up today and give public comment? All right. If not, we'll move on to Commissioner reports. Do we have any Commissioner reports today? All right. If not, do we need executive session for anything?
Section three.
All right. So SDCL 125 two sub three. Right? Okay. Can I get a motion to that effect, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. I've got a motion and a second. We call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. I've got a motion and a second to come out of exec.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Second to Aaron's. We call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. And can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Oh, excuse me. Could I say one thing before you adjourn?
I don't know. Come on up.
All right. Thank you.
Is it going to be nice?
Yes. I just want to thank you for fixing the road from Hudson over to Ting Station. It's a beautiful road. I've traveled on it many, many times with truck and trailer, and it's nice and smooth, and it's much safer than it was. From everybody I've talked to in southern Lincoln County, we really appreciate it, so.
Awesome. That's good to hear.
That's all I have. Thank you.
You can come up anytime you like.
Yeah. Anytime. Thank you. All right. Did I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Motion carries for adjourn.